Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the City of Lebanon, April 18th Plan Commission. Kelly, would you call the roll?
John Lastley?
Here.
Dan Bayshore? Absent. Kevin Krulik?
Here.
Jeremy Lawler? Absent. Heath Campbell?
Here.
Ashley Paddock? Absent. Brian Tandy?
Here.
Ally Mullen?
Here.
Lori Gross?
Here.
Okay, we have approval of minutes, some would like to...anybody have a question about the minutes? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to approve them.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
We have a motion, we need a second.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. You call the roll, please.
John?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Heath Campbell?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ally Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross? Yes.
Okay, Ben, we have any old business that you know of? Okay, the next...the new business, it's docket number 2221, it's a GM Development Companies Lebanon Shell Building requesting rezoning for the property located at 1400 West State Road 32. The property is owned PBC, Planned Business Commercial, requesting rezoning to PBI, Planned Business Industrial. Ben?
All right, I will actually go through information on all the first three items on the agenda, they're all related to this project, so you've got docket in addition to 2221, you've got 22-22, which is the primary plat application for this site, and then 22-23 is a development plan related to this site, so they're all interrelated. So we'll start with just with a quick overview here, you know, I'm sure you're all somewhat familiar with this site, this is State Road 32 to the south, and the interstate is just off the map here to the east. So this site, you'll actually see the overall site, we are taking about, or I should say, the applicant is taking about two-thirds of the back half of the property, the front will remain under its current ownership and reserved for potential retail commercial uses in the future. This back half is the part that would be eligible or proposed for rezon for industrial use, and then the primary plat and development plan. So that's the site that we're looking at here, this is actually a little bit of background on this, this is actually a public-private partnership project, the city is partnering with the applicant and developer to develop this site with a shell building, an industrial shell building. What I mean by that is, in essence, we've got folks that are looking for project or products in this price range or in this building size that aren't being provided by the market. It's really hard to develop these smaller buildings, we're looking to build about a 50,000 square foot shell, it's really hard to make the numbers work on building that size because you have the same land costs, you have the same development costs, and then you're spreading the amount over a more smaller building, so the cost per square foot is really high. So most private developers, it's very difficult for them to make the numbers work to build this type of product, but when we talk to the Boone EDC, they're saying that, you know, upwards of 50% of their requests are for a building this size, and they don't have a building to market for that. So we're looking to partner with the developer to provide this product in the market, and hopefully this is incredibly successful, we're doing a whole bunch of these, because we really feel like this is a market that could be great for Lebanon, because you've got smaller emerging technology companies, you get them to set roots down in here, and then they grow here, and they continue to grow here, and once they're kind of ingrained in the community, they're less likely to leave as they get bigger, they just look for a bigger building and move into that space. So this is a gray-sized company, and with the city be involved, we can, in essence, can dictate who that user is, so it won't become a warehouse user, we're really looking for an advanced manufacturing or technology or R&amp;D-type company to fill this space, and this definitely has the flexibility both for them to be able to expand the building to something bigger than what we're constructing, and then also there's room for a second building on this site. So there's...we're designing with the ultimate flexibility to be able to provide for the type of user that we're looking for. So, just to walk through then the three items, the first one then is a rezon, this property is currently zoned Planned Business Commercial, and we're looking to rezon it to Planned Business Industrial, which would most closely mimic what we'd be looking for in the types of uses in this building, and allow us, again, the most flexibility to market this to those types of users. So with that then, we'll kind of go through, in terms of a rezon, this is a multiple-step process, it starts here with the Plan Commission, the Plan Commission provides a recommendation on that rezon to the council, and then there will be a rezon ordinance on the council's agenda that the council then considers, so the Plan Commission has the authority then to provide a recommendation on that rezoning based on all of our planning documents to the council. So that's what we're going through here, and in terms of that process, there are five criteria that must be met in order for the Plan Commission to provide a recommendation, and the first one of that is consistency with the comprehensive plan. And looking at the comprehensive plan, it provides a future land use plan with guidance on future land uses. The subject property is designated right now generally for commercial uses on the future land use map, and while that, you know, if you look at the overall commercial land use, it's kind of a broad, non-residential classification, so the intended rezon to PBI would be consistent with these goals and objectives, we are still providing frontage for commercial and retail uses, and really kind of taking the back part that's less visible, and then providing for the industrial use. So we do find that the subject rezoning to PBI would be consistent with the goals and objectives of the comp plan. The second criteria is compatibility with adjacent uses, so you can kind of see here, if they would bring the screen back up, you can kind of see here to the west, we've got ag, to the north we have ag, to the east you kind of have some commercial uses along State Road 32 and through the south, then it's industrial. So given the mix of commercial-industrial uses in the developed areas here, we do feel like the rezoning to Planned Business Industrial would be compatible with those adjacent land uses. Criteria number three is the desirability of the land use, and as we just identified, this property is in an area that's currently a mix of commercial-industrial uses, so the rezon to PBI would then allow us to market this to a variety of advanced manufacturing and technology users, that would complement the existing development in the area, and provide for much needed space for users of this size. So with that, then, staff has found that the subject rezoning to PBI is a desirable land use within the proposed area. Criteria four would be impact on property values, and we do find that with the improvements that are almost $4.5 million just for the shell of the building, that this will be complimentary, and would actually enhance property values in the area, so we do find that the subject rezoning to PBI would have no negative impact on property values. And criteria five would be responsible growth. We talked about in terms of responsible growth, is making sure that, again, the use is compatible with the area, we're not looking at a piece of property that's really extending very far out beyond existing city limits where we don't have utilities, and in this case, we're right on the edge of city limits, utilities are right out there on State Road 32, and easily accessible to the property, and we really feel like this is an enhancement to the area in terms of the proposed use. So with that then, we find the subject rezoning to PBI would have...or represents responsible growth in development. With that then, just to kind of put a bow on that one, staff does recommend that the...this petition be forwarded by the Plan Commission to the common council with a favorable recommendation. With that then, I'll just kind of go on to the next two, and then we can kind of come back. I will want three motions from the Plan Commission, one for each one of these items, and I'll kind of go through all three together, and then we can kind of go back. So the second one then is the primary plat. In essence, what we're doing here is, one, identifying, separating that back property from the front third, to be able to make sure that ownership is proper for that back piece of property that we're developing this industrial building on, and then reserving then those front properties for the current owner to be able to market for retail and commercial development. So what this done is, is it creates lot one to the back, which is just a little under nine acres, and then you've got block A and block B that either could be individual, it could be users that would develop this entire property, where this could theoretically be split into smaller properties, if you've got, say, like a fast food restaurant that only needs like 3/4 of an acre, they could split off piece. So this right now would create two lots for commercial, but it could be three or four lots, as long as it meets all the standards, et cetera, related to the ordinance. So that would be the primary plat application here, would be to approve what you see here, creating the three lots, and then you can also see right here in the middle, we're creating an easement, which would provide access back to our lot here, and then it could also be used for utilities, et cetera, extensions. So it's a utility ingress and egress easement, so that would also be recorded as part of the primary plat. And then the owner does own a residual piece of property here to the east, so we have to provide a little bit of an access easement back to that property, just in case they find a way to develop it. I will tell you, most of that is in the floodplain, and also a wetland, so it's...there's not a whole lot of value back there, but we were fine with providing that access easement. And again, the same thing here on the west side, we're also recording an ingress/egress easement along here, in case there's a need for additional access along the west side of the property. So that means the second component is the primary plat, and we need a...staff does recommend approval of the primary plat as presented. And then the third then would be the development plan, so let me start pulling up the site design here for you, we'll kind of walk through the details of that. So here's the overall design of the site, at least what will be constructed as part of the shell construction. It's likely there will be additional improvements to the site once the user identified, if they decide they realize they need more parking, because they have a larger number of employees, we do have space set aside for expansion of parking, we also have an area to the back of the building, where they could add on to the building, I'll kind of show that to you here. So here you can kind of see the site, we will be developing the first phase of the parking lot on the front of the building, it was important to me to show what a finished parking lot would look like. Some shell buildings will just build, say, like the first five or six spaces out in front of the building, just to allow enough space for people to come and park when they're looking at the building. I really wanted the front to look finished, so we will see here in a second, I wanted both a finished parking lot and finished landscaping in front of the building, for marketing purposes. And then you have a proposed 50,000 square foot shell, and what I mean by shell is, it's literally four walls and a roof, there's no floor in it, there's minimal lighting, just in case you need to be in there when it's dark, and minimal air handling, just to keep air moving in there. Otherwise, there's nothing else in there, it's got the ultimate flexibility to be able to design everything on the inside for that potential tenant. There is an overhead door here on the east side of the building, and then four dock doors that you'll see here on the east side of the building, and then you can see here to the back, there is enough space to add about a 30,000 square foot expansion if they needed additional space, once the user's identified, and there would certainly be additional space to add additional dock doors along that east side of the building as well. We also have designed a significant flexibility, if somebody needed some cross dock capability, that they could add dock doors to the west side, and then access that drive that's on the west side as well. So, that's kind of the overall site, in terms of the initial construction, I'll zoom back out a little bit here. As I suggested, there is some residual acreage to the east, that's not part of this initial construction, that is reserved and could be used for a second building that's of a similar size to that. Again, if you get a single user, that all they need is this 50,000 or 80,000 square feet, great, we could potentially find a second user, or if we've got a user that could use additional space, we could construct a second building for them there. So that's the overall site. So in terms of walking through some of the development plan approval process here, we have reviewed all the development standards, and indicate that they have met all of the development standards for the proposed PBI zoning district. Obviously, it is currently zoned Planned Business Commercial, but looking at it based on the proposed rezoning to PBI, we have determined that it meets all the appropriate development standards for that. In terms of parking, again, this is a speculative building, so we don't know the end user, but we have provided for currently 44 spaces to the front of the building, as I showed you before, and then there is potential future parking here. So again, once the user's identified, we determine how many spaces they need, if the 44 is sufficient, we're in good shape, but if they do need more, we do have space to add more as needed. In terms of lighting, again, with this being speculative, we did not intend to install lighting at this time. If that end user decides that they need lighting for the parking lot, they would need to provide us with an appropriate lighting plan, so that we can verify that it does meet all the appropriate standards at that time. Same thing also for signage, clearly we don't have a user identified, but they would have the opportunity to present us a signed package that meets all the appropriate standards once that user's identified. In terms of landscaping, let me go find that one for you here. Got to go through all the utility stuff that I couldn't explain to you anyway. I always put the landscaping in the end, but it's my favorite page. So again, as I mentioned, I really wanted this to look like a finished parking lot, so as you can see here, because this is Planned Business Industrial or Commercial, there is a buffer yard requirement, so you can see we have the buffer planning shown here in the buffer area between those two properties, as well as the required perimeter parking lot landscaping, interior landscaping, and because it's in the thoroughfare overlay, the building-based landscaping. So we have met all of the landscaping standards for this building, and intend with the first phase of construction for all that landscaping to be installed. Looking at the current schedule, it'll likely be next spring before we get to landscaping, but we do intend to install this as presented here tonight, and meeting all the appropriate landscape standards, make sure that this is a really good-looking speculative building out here. On architecture, I'll pull up that rendering for you here. They did get a variance in...what we're looking at here is actually a combination of masonry and then an insulated metal panel, and we really liked what this metal panel do for us, it's actually not a cheaper product than masonry, it's about the same price, so it wasn't the price that we want with this, but it does provide a more modern feel to the building, and also it has much more flexibility to even change anything in terms of what the end user might need. For example, if that user decided they needed a second entrance over here, those panels, you can just pop them right out and create an entrance out of it. If that was concrete, you would be soft-cutting concrete, it's a much more difficult process to make modifications to that. But this does provide incredible amount of flexibility, but again, as we looked at it with the builder, we felt like this was a much better product in terms of providing that flexibility, and it's also really creating a really modern-looking building, and obviously you have the different colors you're able to provide there. And we have determined that this, and when considering the variance to allow for the metal, doesn't meet all the other architectural standards as identified in the ordinance. So we're pretty proud, we just met with the builder just last week to review colors, and we're...unless somebody has any different opinions on colors, this is the color palette that we're going to be going with. So with that then, I've already gone through the primary class, in terms of the development plan, we do recommend approval of the development plan, subject to the following conditions: that adequately address any remaining City Lebanon Technical Advisory Committee comments; two, that the applicant receives formal drainage approval; and then the final one then was on the lighting and signage plans that the applicant submits and receives approval for lighting and signage plans prior to installation of those elements. With that, I've gone through a lot, we have to answer any questions.
Anyone on the board have questions?
Ben, I've got a question, you've mentioned that there would not be any lighting put up on the outside of the building, is that correct? Before...
With the first phase of construction, we wouldn't be installing any...I assume that the end user is going to want lighting for their parking lot, but we won't be installing it now.
Right.
So if the building, which it probably would not, but if it sits for a year, year
and a half, there would be no lighting from the time it was finished until the time it was bonded?
Correct, there will be minimal lighting on the inside, you need to be inside, it's dark, but otherwise the exterior would not have any current lighting. And if it sits a year, a year and a half, we did something wrong, so...because I really think the demand is strong enough that we may have the user identified.
And I don't know if this is even an answer that you can give as far as, but what...so what does the city...what is the city doing as far as land-wise? Are they giving the land to the builder, or how is the city in...
It's...so we did a loan for purchase of land and construction of buildings, so it's all encapsulated in there, so we are essentially buying the land and constructing the building through the redevelopment commission.
Okay.
So this right now is currently owned by the developer, and we're working on a transfer to the redevelopment commission as we speak.
Understood.
Any other questions from the board? Anything else from you, Ben? If not, I'll have the applicant to come forward, please.
Chris Keeman, Rattam Construction. Yeah, so I think Ben did a fantastic job really covering all the big details on the project, so we're currently in design right now, just finalizing all of the engineering drawings at this point, so everything will be designed to the standards that are required. Ben has taken care of the variances that would be necessary for the project, and so I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the building or the design that we have at this point in time.
Anyone have questions for him? Only question I have, are those the same ones, the panels that were shown to the council?
Yes, they are the same panels, they are a little different colors.
Okay, but that's fine, it's the same.
Yes.
It's not metal, as we know.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody else? That's all, thank you. I open up to the public hearing, anyone like to speak? It's docket number 2221, okay? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, okay? Ben, you have anything else you'd like to say?
I don't know that I have anything specific unless there are questions, again, I'm just reminding, we'll be looking for three different motions, one for the recommendation on the rezoning, and then a second for approval of the primary plat, and then a third for approval of the development plan. And I should add, also, I did put these in the conditions, and I should have on the primary plat and development plan, you should probably put in there condition on the adoption of the rezoning by the council, because both of those are relying on the fact that that would be zoned PBI, not PBC, so I would add a condition to both of those that subject to adoption of the rezoning by council.
Okay, I'd also like to open the public hearing for docket 2222, anyone have a conversation for that? Okay, not seeing any, we'll close that, and then we'll go to docket 2223. Same thing, we'll open the public hearing. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close it, and then we ready to approve these, one at a time, right?
Yeah, we'll start one at a time, first one with the rezoning to PBI, looking for a recommendation on the, I guess, on the...providing a recommendation.
So we're ready for docket 2221?
Yeah, 2221.
I would motion docket 22-21 to be a favorable recommendation for the rezon of PBI.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. You have the roll call, please.
John Lastley?
Yes.
Kevin Krulik?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ally Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Okay, the next one will be docket number 2222. I didn't entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the primary plat, subject to the rezoning.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for docket number 22-22. Call the roll, please.
John Lastley?
Yes.
Kevin Krulik?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ally Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, the next one is docket number 22-23. We entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the development plan, subject to rezoning and contingent to addressing all tack comments, stormwater approval, and lighting and signage plans.
Okay, second.
Brian seconded.
Brian, okay, we have a motion and a second, call.
John Lastley?
Yes.
Kevin Krulik?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ally Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Okay, I think that completes those three dockets, okay? The next one will be docket number 22-24, Arbor Homes requesting rezoning from SF Single Family Residential to PUD Planned Unit Development. The property is located at 2802 East, 100 South, and 2502 East, 100 South. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, I'll walk through this one. This is a great project coming to us, and maybe just take a little bit of step back and just kind of, I know we've done a few PUDs here and there over the last few years, and just maybe just to walk back and just talk about, you know, the reason why the PUD process is created, and I think, in actuality, this project is a perfect example of why the PUD process is created, because this project includes multiple product types, in fact, four of them, multiple different lot sizes, you've got a lot of open space, so what the PUD process is, allows you to write the standards appropriate to those four product types all in one ordinance, as opposed to trying to figure out what zoning district works for this one, what zoning district works for this one, you know, and all having four different zoning districts that you're trying to apply to the property. It also allows for a lot more flexibility in terms of designing the site, I'm sure they'll be happy, yeah, they'll be happy to walk through how they do their process to develop the design of the site, but they've done a great job of including different amenities and open space in the project, includes the extension of the Big Four Trail through the site, and then also has an internal trail system to try to connect all the residents to the Big Four Trail, and also to the amenities there. But this is the exact reason why the PUD process is created, to allow some flexibility and creativity in terms of designing a larger development like this, that has multiple product types. So, this is a good one to come for and review in terms of what they're proposing here. And again, what this is, is a rezon, you'll recall a few months ago, this came to you for annexation, and I told you, in a few months, you'll probably see the rezon coming through, and that's where the state's right now. The PUD then is a recommendation from the Plan Commission at the council, the PUD rezon becomes an ordinance that then the council would adopt, so we're looking for the recommendation for you here tonight, and then it would be in front of the council for two readings. Those dates, I know that we've got some folks in the audience that will be interested in this, those dates for the council hearings would be then on April 25th, and then on May 9th, for those hearings on the council ordinance, PUD ordinance. At that point then, they will be working on a preliminary plan for the site, and they will come back then to this body for review and approval of the preliminary plan, basically taking the concept plan that we'll be showing you here tonight, and taking that to further detail on road, lot layouts, and utilities, and all that good stuff. So I will take a brief moment, maybe just to walk through some of the highlights of the development, and I know the applicant's got a presentation they want to provide to you to go into further detail of that. Again, I mentioned this is...PUD, they're calling Stone Horse, the development will be called Stone Horse. Again, I mentioned this is the PUD rezon, so we've got a conceptual layout that shows you road and lot layouts and amenities, et cetera, and then also they have a PUD ordinance that establishes all the design and development standards associated with each one of those housing product types, and then also identifies then the amenities, et cetera, in ordinance form. So, the important thing, obviously, we want to make sure that the concept plan makes sense for the overall site, because the really important thing at this point is really, the staff has spent a lot of time reviewing the PUD ordinance, making sure those development standards were set up appropriately for each one of those product types, and making sure that it was something that we were, we found acceptable in terms of the landscaping and architectural standards for the overall development. So kind of walking through, just a quick highlight if I bring my screen up here, here's the overall site. This, again, this is 100 South on the south side of this development, the interstate 65, and the fairgrounds are just off the map to the west here. The Waterford Development, which I know everybody is very familiar with, the Waterford Development is just directly to the south and across the street from 100 South in this area, and then Waterford also has a residual about 160-acre piece that's just west of this, so they're surrounded both on the south and west by the Waterford Development that you see here. The Big Four Trail, you can kind of see what the route would be, and I'll show it in further detail on the concept plan, but this is the old railroad right of way right here, that would be the route of the Big Four Trail through this site. So let me pull up concept plan for you here, and just kind of walk through the overall development. So this is the overall concept plan, there's a lot of information here to try to be able to show you, but this shows you by the colored lots, the various product types, you have the move-up product, is the silver phone product kind of in this orange or peach color you see here in the middle, those include the largest lot sizes and the largest homes, and also the lowest density. The second one then would be the Arbor Homes product, which would be the yellow sites that you see here, and then the third would be the Genesis product that's usually kind of in this pink color here, that's scattered amongst the Arbor product, and then the fourth then would be this green one, which... And then the fourth then would be this green one, which is the Destination product. This is a villa product that's geared towards empty nesters, it has low maintenance exteriors, all the yard work is taken care of in common. So this is a low to no maintenance product, these are geared more towards empty nesters or people that are looking to downsize. Lot sizes range anywhere from, so the Genesis product, again, they'll go through this much for the Genesis, the unique product, what we're trying, what they're trying to do here is trying to get to an attainable price point for a first-time home buyer. As we all know, prices are skyrocketing on houses right now. Just in Boone County right now, the average sale price of an existing home is like 300, almost $350,000, which is not attainable for a first-time home buyer. And even on the new construction, with land prices and construction prices going up, those average prices for products are skyrocketing as well. It's making it very hard to hit that first-time home buyer market. So this is a new product that Arbor's been working on to try to hit that first-time home buyer market. You can kind of see here, and again, they've got a model here, they're showing here a little bit, but they're actually building them as a cluster, where there are six homes that are all built on, and you have a shared driveway, if you will. And that, again, they're trying to find ways to just create some economies of scale that lower the cost of construction, to try to get back into that more attainable price point for a first-time home buyer. And when I say that, we're still talking about something that the price point on average is going to be in the mid 200s. So whereas some of us, when we bought our first home, we paid a lot less than that, that's what the first-time home buyer market is right now, is in the low to mid 200s, and they're trying to hit that price point. So I have a summary for you in the staff report of all of the design standards, overall, the overall development, the density is about 2.4 units per acre, which is actually just a little bit less than what Waterford's overall density was, at 2.5. So they're very much in the same range in terms of overall number of lots that you'll see in the developments you'll find in Waterford. And the big reason is, is they've got a lot of common area and open space in this development. You can see here, they've actually got a gas pipeline that runs right through the middle, where they couldn't put houses, so they've actually used it to try to add some trail systems that run through here. You've got three different large amenity areas, the primary area, you can kind of see here in the center, includes a pool and clubhouse, and a playground, volleyball courts, and things like that, geared towards kind of those growing families and active families. In the first-time home buyer section, we're going to see a lot of younger kids, it's primarily focused on a playground and trails getting to and from the homes, that you kind of see in this small area here. And then in the Destination area, which is, again, geared towards more empty nesters, you're going to see more things, more like pickleball courts and bocce courts, geared to those folks that are looking for that type of amenity, that will live in those areas. But certainly, they're all accessible across the neighborhood, you can kind of see intermingled throughout the development, there's an internal trail network that you see intermingled throughout the entire development. And then you can see also how they've kind of shown in concept what the Big Four Trail route would look like, with the landscaping, et cetera. In terms of the architectural standards, they primarily are going to meet the standards of the ordinance, they've modified a few standards that I've identified here, they've slightly modified our anti-monotony standard. Essentially, what you got here is the same front elevation design, can't be on any of the three lots on either side of the home that's being constructed, so you make sure you don't have similar elevations on the three lots on either side, and then also across the street. All dwellings would have a minimum of 50% masonry on the facade, unless they've got designs where you've got other siding styles, so they can do a brick Wayne Scott up to the first floor of the first level of the windows, if they've got two other siding styles on the front facade. So they do have some flexibility there. And then they've also addressed some of the window trims, et cetera. In terms of landscaping standards, they intend to meet all of our lot landscaping standards, which would include two trees and eight shrubs in the front yard, and if it's a corner lot, an additional tree and eight shrubs in the side yard on that corner facing the street. So they will have landscaping on every lot that meets our standards. In addition, they're showing buffer yards. I know we've got a couple places where we've either got like utility sites, they're going to provide a buffer yard with landscaping around the utilities there to kind of provide some screening. And then in places where we have homes directly adjacent to the neighborhood, they are additionally providing a buffer with landscaping along this edge here, to provide a buffer between these new homes and those existing homes. Again, they're kind of using the Big Four Trail as a buffer to these existing homes on 100 South here, so they're doing a good job of providing buffers to screen from any of those existing neighbors that you see there. Just real quickly, I'll walk through the staff report, decision criteria on PUD rezones, there are five criteria that the planning commission should review. And the first is the extent to which the proposal fulfills or requires intent of the comprehensive plan. I know the applicant's going to walk through some of the specific strategies in the comprehensive plan. Really what we look there is, the comprehensive plan, when we put it together, I guess about three and a half years ago now, we were doing our best to try to identify what we expected to happen in the city over the next five to 10 years, and where we think it would go. So it was at best a guess of where we thought development would occur. And so certainly, a lot of things have happened in the city in the last three and a half years, the biggest one in this area being the Waterford Development, which we knew was going to generate additional interest in the area, so this is not a surprising development that we see here coming with Waterford also in the area. So while in the comprehensive plan, we suggested this area, we expected it to remain agriculture like at current use, we also didn't anticipate the types of development that would occur in these five years. So we really feel like this is appropriate development, given our other strategies and goals of the comprehensive plan, with the understanding that, you know, there's only certain things that you can predict when you're doing those plans, and that little window, and knowing things are going to change over time, and being flexible enough to be able to create good quality developments that meet the other goals, strategies, or comprehensive plan. So we do really think that this fulfills the intent of the comprehensive plan in this area. The second one is the current conditions and character of current structures and uses in zoning district. Right now, the Silverthorn PUD is an area that we need is primarily undeveloped at this time, as you can see, to the west, north, and east, it's primarily agricultural. You do have some rural residential on 100 South, and here to the east, but it's primarily agricultural at this point. Obviously, the big thing in this area is the Waterford Development's going to be a significant change in this area, and we really do feel like this development was going to complement what we see proposed for the Waterford Development. In terms of the most desirable use of the land, again, looking at uses ranging from residential, commercial, industrial, we really feel like the residential use is the most desirable land use for this area, so we do really feel like it meets that criteria. The fourth one is our, is the conservation of collective property values throughout the city of Lebanon as a whole, and we do not anticipate that this development's going to have any negative impact on property values, on City of Lebanon as a whole. We really feel like this is complementary to the city, and is going to provide a needed product, and actually, over time, will have a positive impact on values. And the fifth one is responsible growth in the development, this area, given the fact that Waterford's coming into the area, and going to bring utilities to the area, means we're going to have plenty of utility available in this area. And so we really feel like this does represent responsible growth in development, given the fact that there's other development happening in the area, and this is just a natural extension of what's taking place. So with that, Ben, staff conclusion, in review of this PUD rezone and ordinance as presented, staff finds compliance with UDO, established design criteria, and recommends the planning commission forward the planning and development rezone, and ordinance to the common council with a favorable recommendation. And with that, I will stop. And if you have any questions for me, I will be happy to answer them, and then what the applicant I know has some additional information I'd like to share with you.
Any of the board members have a question for Ben on this project?
Hey, Ben, on the lift station, I was reading the tack comments, and they were talking about that being in stages. Do we have an idea time-wise when that might be available for them?
Yeah, I think we expect, the design is underway, the intent right now is that construction will start still this year, and it's about a 12-month construction schedule, maybe a little bit faster, depending on how quickly they can get the force main through town, but they're looking about a nine to 12-month construction schedule. I don't know specifically what their timing is, but my understanding is that we wouldn't see any houses in this neighborhood going up until probably 2024, given they have some other developments in the area. So I think we're well within the timeline of being able to provide them service.
I wasn't sure how close they were to, okay.
Yeah, we're getting close, we've got a few eyes and a lot of teeth in the crossbow, we're getting close on the utilities for Waterford, which will bring services to this area.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thanks, Ben. I'd ask for the applicant to come forward, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Austin Cheeley, Vice President of Apposition and Entitlements at Arbor Homes. And I want to thank Ben again for a great presentation and an introduction to our project that will be known as Stone Horse. For those of you that don't know who we are, Arbor Homes is an Indianapolis-based home builder and developer. We've been in business since 1994, and recently in 2018, we were purchased by Clayton Properties Group, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Berkshire Hathaway. Again, just to kind of recap the area of where the Stone Horse PUD will be located, as shown on the, I guess, the outline, notated as the site on this aerial map. Again, Waterford, adjacent to the west and the south. And then again, this is just a drill-in version to show the frontage along the Big Four Trail. This is an image of the zoning map, again, so surrounding land use targeted for single-family use, as well as mixed use with the Waterford PUD. And then we'll spend some time drilling into the concept plan and the development plan for the Stone Horse community. So again, this is a master's land community, it's 232 acres, 563 lots, with a density of 2.4 units to the acre. It does have four product types, Silverthorn, which consists of 144 lots, our traditional Arbor product, which is 231 lots, Destination at 98 lots, and Genesis at 90 lots altogether. Each one of these different product types in the different areas will have its own associated series of lot standards, which will be defined on one of the following slides, but in your handouts as well. But I think the big thing here to call out is, we have 73 acres of open space, and that's really where we started with this design. So when we first got the site under contract, knowing that it had, you know, the Big Four Trail running right through it, and the Waterford PUD adjacent to it, we started with the amenities and the open space in mind. So we really kind of built out and tried to maximize the character with the Big Four Trail being so close, and have a interconnected trail system that leads homeowners to that trail, so that they can get to and from, you know, walking, cycling, and going about their daily lives. So 2.6 miles in total trail, a clubhouse, poolhouse, playgrounds, pickleball courts in the Destination section, as well as picnic area, and a couple of pocket parts along the way. So as you can see, what we tried to do is really put our best foot forward with this site design, with the open space, and just having a project this size really allows a developer, and allows us to put something in front of everyone that we're really proud of. And again, Ben highlighted the landscaping bufferings, and then the street trees consistent with the ordinance, so we can go into more details if we need to on those. The next slide just outlines the standards within each of the sections for the different product types. Again, starting with Silverthorn, which will be the largest lot size, total area about 10,500 square feet as the minimum, lot widths of 75, and then kind of moving to the right, Arbor at 7,800, with a lot width of 60, Destination shade over 8,300, with a minimum lot width of 62 feet, and then Genesis at almost 3,000 square feet, with a minimum lot width of 40 feet. And again, with Genesis, that's the most unique product, the most non-traditional product within this PUD, and we'll get into some more detail about that. But we brought a model, which is a 3D representation of what one of those, what we're calling branches or clusters, looks like, and so that is a good visual representation of what one of those will look like, and how that, each one of those clusters will be designed. Again, just to touch on architectural standards, Ben mentioned our anti-monotony, and just to clarify, it would be three lots in a row, so basically, your neighbors, and then the block, or I guess the home across the street, none of those would have the same front elevation. Some additional requirements on corner lots, front elevation, masonry requirements, 50% masonry, unless there is a masonry Wayne Scott that goes, that wraps the entire, I guess, all both the sides and then the rear. And then, again, with the Genesis product specifically, really trying to address price points, the masonry requirement would not apply to this specific product type. Side and rear elevations, again, require masonry Wayne Scott when facing a public street, and does not apply to homes with 100% fiber cement, and does not apply to Genesis. Again, the window and door trim, and then three-tab shingles will be prohibited within this PUD. So just again, to kind of touch on product types, Silverthorn is typically targeting our move-up buyer. Right now, on average, for sales in 2022, we're averaging almost $450,000 with this product type. So we'll have 11 floor plans, each one of those floor plans will have anywhere between four, and I believe seven different elevation styles for a buyer to choose from. So again, anti-monotony should not be a challenge whatsoever. Living areas, these homes range from 1,800 square feet all the way up to 3,300 square feet, those are just base square footages, so if a buyer were to add basements, add extensions, et cetera, that's obviously going to deviate and increase. And again, just a few included features on that product type. And then here are some character exhibits that kind of show that product. And then our traditional Arbor product, 12 floor plans, each one of them has at least five elevation options, again, should not have any issues with anti-monotony. So both single-family and two-story plans, ranging from 1,200 square feet at the smallest ranch, all the way up to 3,200 square feet, and again, those are base square footages. And so we've called out again, what would change those square footages would be, you know, different flex spaces, third car garage wouldn't count, but those are some of the options that we would offer our buyers. Again, just another character representation. And then what is most likely new to a lot of you are the next two product types, our Destination Series. We are currently, well, currently constructing three communities in the market area, and should be constructing in four within the calendar year. Those are located in Westfield, Noblesville, Greenwood, and in Pendleton. And this is really a product that is, again, low-maintenance living for, targeting the empty nest buyer. So trying to target that 55 and older community, with five floor plans, six different elevations associated with each of those plans. The living area square footage is ranging from 1,500 to 3,200 square feet. Again, you can add lots, you can add basements, you can really build this product out however the buyer sees fit. But again, it's really targeted at serving that 55 and older community who's looking for a low-maintenance lifestyle, right? So within the sub HOA for the Destination Series, it will spell out guidelines, but all of these homes will be low-maintenance, which would include snow removal and lawn care and tree care year-round. Irrigation packages are included with these homes. And again, the supplemental DCCRs, which are straight playgrounds, trampolines, basketball courts, as a way to more directly cater to the, I guess, the desires to someone who's downsizing and looking for a more low-maintenance lifestyle. Again, character representations follow. And then the newest product line is Genesis, and really where this started is an admission to really combat the challenges that we have with affordability right now. So just bringing you back to 2017, our traditional Arbor Homes product, average sales price was $170,000. Today, that is $350,000. So we've seen almost a, you know, a $200,000 increase in the span of five years. Now, there are a lot of different factors that play into that, but a $350,000 home isn't affordable for most first-time home buyers, and someone trying to get in and get started, establish, and start building wealth. And so really, what this design, you know, we, within the Clayton builder umbrella, there is a builder in Denver, Colorado, that utilized this cluster design, these shared motor courts as a way to increase density. And increasing density is one of the ways that you can achieve economies of scale enough to be able to make a difference from a price standpoint on the development side. On the home building side, each one of those homes has the same foundation footprint. So the walls, the interiors, those designs, they are different, but the foundation itself is the exact same. And through those kind of building models, we're able to get some cost back and then pass those cost savings on to the buyer. And that's really the only way that we can reasonably combat affordability without attaching a product and going to attach drought. So this is in our mind, putting our best foot forward as a way to combat the affordability crisis that we do face for a single-family detached home. So again, anywhere, just depending on the community, you'd have these clusters that are going to have four to eight homes, they'll have the shared motor court, those motor courts will be maintained by some HOA, so snow removal, you know, during the winter time, that will, the HOA will take care of that. Each home will have a private fenced that surrounds the property itself, and you can kind of take a look how that will be designed in that model. But another big thing is, again, a low-maintenance front yard. This is something that, you know, with density, you know, trying to add a low-maintenance lot. light, I guess I should say, value proposition to these homeowners. Because again, the market research today would show that a lot of first-time home buyers living with that first-time home, one of the biggest fears is maintenance and maintaining a home. And so an element of low maintenance is something that we thought is attractive and is something that we can easily offer our buyers with this product type. So the next slide, again, these are some character representation, or representations of what this product will look like from the frontal side. And again, as I mentioned, this is just a data slide. The next few are going to be pretty, pretty data-rich, so feel free to stop me if you have any questions. But the only call out here is we have a shortage. We face a shortage in housing supply all across central Indiana and across the country. So most specifically, the Indianapolis region has been under building approximately 1,700 units per year. That's a stat coming from the local builders association group back in 2018, and it has continued and gotten worse. I think the two biggest things that are kind of limiting the supply is obviously we've had a robust demand over the past several years, but then obviously bottlenecks throughout the entire, you know, really process, all the way starting here at entitlements and zoning, but, you know, more recently, some of the supply chain challenges and shortages that we face. So again, bringing this home to Lebanon is, a six-month supply is really what is considered healthy in a market. Pulling this data earlier this month, our MyBor Market Insights tool indicates that the Lebanon markets, the months of supply is right around half a month. So any inventory that is on the market is turning extremely quickly. And again, just to add another source to kind of validate that, Redfin posts a public, they post basically the same stat, and it might be slightly different because how they calculate Lebanon versus MyBor is different. But again, it just shows that we're well under a month in terms of months of supply. Next few slides are just at our average price, where we project our average price today would be if we were building this. So for Silverthorn, again, right around that 450,000 mark, the shaded lines on this axis just kind of represent the intersection of that price versus the value in terms of price per square foot. So we'll just kind of go through these next slides. There's some data as it, I guess, comparing that intersection point to the rest of the market over the last 12 months. But really, the call out here is where those intersection points lie, where price point is for the, these two, for, excuse me, for Silverthorn, Arbor, and Destination, all well above the market median, which we think this market can support that, especially when we're delivering on our value proposition, which is kind of that horizontal shaded, shaded bar. But then where Genesis would fall. And so 200,000 is kind of that ambitious target for us. We do expect that these homes will be anywhere between 200 and 250,000 when it's all said and done. We don't know that specifically because we've never built one yet. We do, so the city of Columbus recently approved the zoning for Genesis community. It is a, is a community that is combined with our traditional Arbor product. So this is something that, you know, Columbus, Indiana has agreed to take on with us, and we're excited about that project as well as this project here. And then again, just to touch on, so a few points in the comprehensive plan, I won't go into great detail, but again, just addressing the fact that this Stone Horse development would fit the need, I guess, meet the criteria defined for housing in neighborhoods, within the quality of life, the transportation utilities, and the land use and development and character portions of the comprehensive plan. So in conclusion, and again, forgive me for talking in length, but it's a big project, and I think it deserves to go all the way through. But it's in an excellent location. It's a great, adjacent to growth and utilities that will be expanding to the area. It fulfills the goals of the comprehensive plan while increasing the housing stock. And I guess the best thing as we look at this project, and the reason why we're so excited about it is the fact that this could be somewhere where someone could really age in place. They could go through the different seasons of life in this community, from the time that they buy their first home, where they move up potentially multiple times, to when they decide to downsize and kind of really utilize that low maintenance lifestyle. And so we're excited what the size of this project can bring, that we can bring multiple product types to the area. And really, the only thing that we ask tonight is for a favorable recommendation to council. I will just, you know, share some insight. We are bumping up against some milestones within our due diligence period with the, with the property owner. And so just as for your consideration, we ask that any major concerns this evening, you address as conditions to any recommendation that you would make to council. With that, I will, I guess, close and open myself for any questions that you guys might have.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anyone from the board have any questions?
On the Destination, that's the, that's like the early nesters that you're talking about.
Empty nest, yeah.
Kind of like me eventually. We only have one other housing development here in town, correct, Ben, that has those type of driveways? They're behind Burger King, is that correct?
Can you say your question again?
So I guess my concern is the driveways that, that they're talking where it's like one entrance and serves six different homes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's all.
The clusters, okay.
Genesis.
The Genesis, I'm sorry, okay. So we only have one neighborhood HOA system here in town that has that. I guess my question is, I know that they, the people that live there aren't real fond of that. You say this has not been something that you guys have done?
This is not, no, this is not a product that we've built yet in this market.
I guess a follow-up on that question, does the HOA require that people do not park on that street?
Yes, so the HOA, so the set of DCCRs will govern that parking is not, will not be allowed within the motor court of that branch design. Any other questions?
Any other questions from the board? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you for your.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing now, and if anyone comes forward, you be sure you announce your name and your address, okay? Now it's open to the public hearing right now. Come on up. Yeah, we'll hold you three minutes, please. Okay, thank you.
My name is Mike Prather, and I currently live on 300. This is right behind their development and stuff, so I had a few questions, so I don't know if this is the proper place or not. They're talking about the road. Are all the inlets and outlets to this development on 100 South?
Yeah, and I tell you what, we'll wait and we'll answer them. You ask all the questions you want, and they'll answer them after you're done. Okay? So ask your questions.
The other question is, there's annex to the farm bank, what they're going to develop there off E300. What's the plan for that? I mean, I think it's only 50-foot, that's too, too little for a road. I don't know what they're, we wouldn't want a road, that's right by my house, but I, I don't know what they're planning to do there, if anything.
Is that your two questions then?
And then one more.
Okay.
All the houses there on E300 and stuff, what, what are they doing to separate, you know, between their development and our current, current houses? Would there be anything, trees or bushes or dis yard, or dis yard? I don't know.
Okay, we'll have him answer those questions for you.
That, that's it?
That's it, thank you. Would the applicant come back and answer? Anyone else before we close it? Anyone else would like to ask questions? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and then would the applicant come up or Ben, so he can answer those questions?
Yeah, I can, I can address them if the applicant needs to supplement. If they want to pull that screen back up, I can just go ahead and use this. So you can see here, they have one primary entrance along 100 South, and then a second entrance that goes in to the Destination section. So there are, there are two entrances, both on 100 South. They have done a preliminary traffic plan to look at what improvements might be necessary in terms of turn lanes, passing blisters, et cetera. So we've got those recommendations that we'll be taking into consideration when we do preliminary plan. But there currently is no entrances on 300 East there, so it's all, the entrances are all on 100 South. In terms of that little stub on 300 East, they don't even show it on their concept plan. I don't think they intend to do, to use it for anything, so it's going to remain as is. Yeah, there's a, just a, trying to get my, there's a little stub that comes out to 300 here, and they have no intentions to use it for any improvements there. It's going to remain as is. And then finally, in terms of anything to, any treatments, they will be providing, my mouse keeps going away, a 20-foot buffer along the back here that will be planted with trees and shrubs per our buffer requirements, that will provide screening between the, the new development and those existing homes there. So there will be a significant amount of landscaping within a 20-foot buffer that's planted back, back there that those, those homes wouldn't be able to provide, do any improvements within that area. It would have to remain that 20-foot buffer with trees and shrubs there. So there will be, provide buffer there as well as along the Big Four Trail for the existing homes on 100 South. So they have addressed that with buffer landscaping that we worked out with them.
Any other questions from, you hear it? Okay, I'd answer your question, sir. Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing now and move on forward to a motion here.
Can I clarify something? There's only two.
Yes.
There's only two entrances and exits to this whole 260 acres, is that what you're telling?
Yeah, there's two, and then that's primarily, that's the only place that they have street access is in that location along 100 South. So they provided those two entrances there, and then done a traffic study to figure out what improvements might be necessary to 100 South to be able to adequately address the traffic that's concerned there. So we do have those, and we'll be incorporating them in preliminary plan. But that's, those are the only locations where they have street frontages right there along 100 South.
Up on the, up on the top of the map, Ben, the, it looks like there's two eventual entrances or exits. Is that, what, is there a road there? I'm sorry, I'm not.
No, that, that, we, we require stubs to adjacent properties, so those are, those would be stubs.
Possibilities.
Any potential development that may happen.
Possibilities, okay, okay.
Yep.
I couldn't tell if there was a road up that way or not, it's hard to tell. Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you, sorry.
There's a lot of information going on, so if you have any other questions, if there are already.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion for docket 22-24.
I make a motion that we recommend to forward the plan unit development rezone and ordinance to the common council with a favorable recommendation.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. The rule call, please.
John Lastly.
Yes.
Evan Krulik.
Yes.
Heath Campbell.
Yes.
Brian Tandy.
Yes.
Ali Mullen.
Yes.
Lori Gross.
And just a quick reminder, I covered it at the beginning of this presentation, but it's been a little bit since then. Again, this, this is the recommendation that goes to the council. The first reading of the PUD ordinance of the council will be next Monday evening, which is the 25th. And then the second reading and potential adoption of that ordinance would take place a couple of weeks later on May 9th. At that point, the ordinance theoretically would be adopted, and they would be moving forward with preliminary plan stage, which would come back to this body for review and approval. And then you'll have more details on road layouts, lot layouts, any improvements necessary to 100 South, and that will all be included at that time.
Anything else, Ben, on this one? Okay, next one is docket number 2225. Patterson Street Partners requesting development plan approval for a proposed speculative industrial facility to be located at 320 North Patterson Street. The property is Zoned ID General Industrial.
All right, so this is another site that we've been working on for a little while. I'm kind of excited to see this project moving forward. Here on Patterson Street, a number of you already seen have this come through the various VZA hearings. Excited to report that we're ready to move forward with a speculative industrial building on this site, which is a site of the former industrial building that sat vacant for a number of years and was a tremendous eyesore on Patterson Street. So this kind of gives you an idea what the current condition of the site was. Not only was there a significant sized building on here, but there were also some, some significant environmental issues as well that the applicant both tore a building down, then also addressed all those environmental conditions. And I believe they are, they're done addressing, remediating those environmental conditions or will shortly be done with that. This, in addition to there being a large unusable building plus environmental conditions, also the primary trunk line to our sanitary sewer treatment plant runs right through the middle of this property and was underneath the building that was there before. So we're pretty happy to see that we've uncovered our major sanitary sewer trunk line that goes to that treatment plant as part of this project, and will have better access to it moving forward. So that's kind of a side benefit here, but pretty excited to see this project moving forward here. I'm excited to bring this for you tonight for development plan approval. So just kind of walking through, just a quick highlights here. One thing, you did have some information that was dropped off before the meeting to you, that came from the applicant. They have provided some updated elevations in there and some additional information. As you may recall, I haven't read the staff report, we did recommend a continuance based on some items we were addressing with them related to the design of the building. They did provide some additional information earlier today on that. We're working through some final details, but I think we do have enough information that we can make a positive recommendation tonight, and I'll go through that in more additional detail when we get to it. But they have provided some updated elevations to staff earlier this afternoon that we have reviewed. There may be some minor tweaks that may, we may work on with them, but we feel we're at a point now where we can recommend favorably on this, and I'll kind of walk through those details when we get to them. Let me bring up their site plan here. So this is the overall proposal for the site. I would point out here, there's our, there's our primary sanitary line that runs through north of the building now, so it's not going to be under building, which is great. We've also accommodated, accommodated for the most part the regulated drain easement that runs down the avenue, regulated drain that was directly north and adjacent to the site. So again, all welcome improvements from where this site was previously. You can see here, they've got a proposed industrial building, it's about 50,000 square, 45,000 square feet that you see here. They have some employee parking on both the north and south sides of the building. And then the primary access for trucks and dock doors will be on the backside of the building, which faces towards the railroad, for all those who remember the site. To the south, this is the existing Big Four Trail. So they have provided accommodations for that. And then they also have some flexibility, again, this is a speculative building, so the tenant is not known at this time, so they have provided some flexibility to add some additional employee parking spaces, truck parking spaces, depending on what the user might need. So they do have some flexibility associated with the site that would be installed with the initial construction, but then depending on when that end user is identified, it has the flexibility to be able to change and modify the site to the, to the, to the needs. This also does show here all of those landscaping, they have provided some buffer landscaping on the Big Four Trail, and then also along Patterson Street. As you probably are familiar with this area, this is, there's a lot of mix of uses in this area, so you've got some residential uses across the street, so they have provided fairly significant landscape buffer along Patterson Street to help screen from those, those uses that you see there. So that's just a quick overview of the site. This has gone a couple of times in the Board of Zoning Appeals, back in February, then again in April, just to address some items related to setbacks. As you know, this is a fairly small site, and trying to fit a building on here with the restrictions of the site is fairly difficult, so they did get a handful of setback variances. And then again, also in terms of allowing flexibility on the rear of the property, they did do a variance for curbing. If you install curbing here, and then, and then later you realize you're going to need to expand the paved area, then you're ripping curbing out, so they did want some flexibility so they didn't have to install curbing to just allow some flexibility for those expansions. So again, in terms of development plan, just kind of walked through some highlights for you here. This has been reviewed by tech, and they are, are working on addressing all those comments and making sure that all those are comments are addressed before they move forward with any construction plan approval. Development standards, again, we've reviewed all those development standards for the general industrial zoning district and, and ensure that they met all those standards, and they do. But also considering the variances that were approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. In terms of parking, again, I mentioned this is speculative, so there's not a user identified, so we do have 37, or excuse me, 39 spaces that are provided on this site currently, with the potential to add additional tenant in the future. So again, depending on what that user's needs are, the applicant and the staff feels like we do have adequate number of parking spaces, but there is flexibility and space to add additional spaces in the future if the, the end user does need them. And we'll be reviewing that at the time that the tenant is identified to make sure that they're adequately addressed. In terms of lighting, we do have a lighting plan, but it didn't include the photometrics. So in terms of lighting, if they need to, or intend to install lighting, we'll ask them to submit the photometric plan and make sure that it meets all appropriate standards. Again, I mentioned some of the landscaping, so we reviewed that in terms of, that it meets all the applicable standards for in terms of landscaping, we're considering all the variances that have been approved. Signage, again, sort of like the project earlier, this Signage, again, sort of like the project earlier, this is a speculative, so the tenants, so the signage hasn't, or what, hasn't been identified at this point, and don't depend on, on the tenant's needs, and we will just ensure that they provide a signage plan that meets all applicable standards at the appropriate time. In terms of architecture, here's where we had some questions related to design, and we identified in the staff report that there was a standard related to continuous facades that they had not addressed at the time of this, of the distribution of the staff report. They have since addressed those and provided a new elevation that is much closer to meeting the intent of that, that standard in terms of providing architectural design breaks, or changes in color, and that's what I'll show you here. This is the front elevation, as you see here before, it was a standard color, kind of this tan color all the way across, and what they've done is pervaded, provided variations on color to be able to provide visual breaks on that front facade that you'll see on Patterson Street, so they are much closer to meeting the intent of that design standard, and staff feels comfortable at this point, providing a positive recommendation on a continued, on finalizing and getting approval from staff related to the final elevations, as you see here. So with that, then, I know in the staff report, we have recommended continuance so we could work on this item, but we do have enough information now that we feel comfortable we can amend our recommendation, and at this point, I would recommend approval of this development plan subject to the following conditions, one, that they address any remaining TAC comments, the second, that they would receive formal drainage approval, the third one, that they would receive approval for lighting and signage prior to installation, and finally, the fourth one, that they would adequately address any remaining facade comments or issues with staff and receive formal approval from staff on a final elevation. With that, if you have any answering questions?
Okay, anyone, any questions? From Ben? Only question I have of you, Ben, when we look at the building, are they going to still, are their heating and air conditioning going to be on the roof?
Are they going to install?
Yeah, are they going to-
My guess, with this being speculative, they'll, they'll install basic air handling, ventilation basically, but they won't, they won't install a full HVAC equipment until sometime as the tenant is identified-
At some point when it's finished, will it be on the roof?
Yeah, yeah, once, once they've identified the tenant, and they figure out exactly what their needs are in terms of heating and air, then they'll install it at that time.
It'll be covered from the street, right?
Say that again.
It'll be non-visible from the street?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, no other questions? We'll have the applicant come forward, please.
My name's Adam D. Hardum, project manager with Keylor Webb Associates, our offices are located at 486 Gradle Drive, Carmel, Indiana, 46032. With me this evening is Reed Litwack, one of the owners from Patterson Street Partners LLC, that's been working on this project. To give you a little bit more background on this, the partners purchased this property in 2018, there's been a lot of, in fact, millions of dollars done to that front, that site to date, for demolition, remediation, and, and preparation of building a building here, getting a demo done. We had two bridges that crossed Prairie Creek that caused some issues drainage-wise that we've been able to remove. All told, the investment by the partners in this project with the demolition, remediation, and redevelopment of the property, they're going to have about $7 million into this project. We have been working with the city of Lebanon for several years, as I said, this is in a TIF district, the property is zoned industrial, the proposed use is industrial. The previous, and to give you a little bit of an idea of scope on, on the, on the site, the previous building was 180,000 square feet on the five acres, in fact, portions of the building were out in the Patterson Street rightaway, all the way out past where the sidewalk and the existing rightaway would have been. As, as Ben mentioned, we've worked with the city also on removing the building and then coming up with an easement area for the interceptor and the future force main that'll go through the area. We've designed our drainage system in such a way that it won't interfere with that sanitary sewer, and have worked arm-in-arm with the city and engineering department to accomplish some of that. The property has a lot of issues as far as development is concerned, as Ben said, we had to get several variances because of the frontage on Patterson Street, residential zoning to the east, we're surrounded on the west by an existing active railroad, and then on the south, we have the big R brand-new pathway that's been installed there, and then to the north, we have an extensive flood plain and floodway and legal drain that we have to work around on Prairie Creek. That brings multiple jurisdictions of drainage and stormwater review into effect on the project. Our plan is, as we have presented today, won't be getting involved with any core or IDEM permits, we're trying to stay out of the flood plain and the floodway to the most extent as we can. Can I switch us over to the landscape plan, Ben? I'm sure I didn't want to start clicking your stone. Prairie Creek lies to the north, there's also a large drainage easement that's associated with that. We will be, upon a decision by this board, we will be making a presentation to the Boone County Drainage Board for a small consent to encroach there along the north side of the property, just so that we can make our connection with our north entrance. We felt like this building of this size and the site circulation to work out with the trucks and the employees, and the people that would come to the facility to work there, and any potential customers, that we needed two entrances, that works out well with the circulation for the vehicles on one tenant for sure, and the potential for a second tenant on the north side of the building. I'll note that this will be a finished building, it will be finished with an office, so that somebody can move in immediately, but we've made the accommodation to potentially have the building split where it may have a 10,000-square-foot tenant and 35,000, it may be 2250, 2250, shared right down the middle, but we have a lot of flexibility built into our design so that we can accommodate one single user or two users depending on what size and shape they actually need there. So there's a lot of good flexibility built into that. To answer your question, sir, there will be some outside air conditioner units that will be adjacent to the office on the south side of the building, they're planned to be screened in compliance with the ordinance, so that they won't be seen from the street by landscaping. There will be heat in the building with large units, but those will be inside the structure, there will be some louvers scattered throughout the building for different HVAC needs. Because it's planned to be an office warehouse distribution center, we don't foresee air conditioning, the large warehouse space, but depending on the tenant that comes in, if they require it, of course, we'll put that in. Any accommodations we make for that, will, the intent is to comply with the ordinance, but that'll be done on an as-needed basis with the tenant in the future. We've made a couple of changes on this plan to accommodate some of the items that were brought up in the TAC meeting, specifically the water quality swell, stormwater detention bond that we intend to stall on the west side. The previous design was aligned slightly different, we modified that so that all of that stormwater detention is west of the edge of pavement and south of the sanitary sewer, so that the detention area and the stormwater design won't interfere with the sanitary sewer in any way. Redevelopment of the project, like I said, needed the two curb cuts, we're going to be working with the county to take care of the north curb cut, which is immediately adjacent to the bridge, and then the south curb cut will be used also for customers and the over-the-road semi-truck traffic that we expect will be using the facility. This redevelopment project should increase the tax base for the schools and not be a burden on the system. We've worked with the city in many different areas to work out continuity conflicts and issues that we can resolve with the redevelopment of this building. We do not expect any other codes or ordinance to have any variances, the building will be fully sprinkled, so it won't be a fire hazard for public. And then, in the packet that I sent you, I wanted to pull out a couple of different items in there. One was our plain previous building elevations that we have submitted, which has an architectural metal wall panel or concrete block on all four sides. Our color scheme on this building is variations of gray, so when you're looking at the new building elevations and they appear gray, that's because our color scheme is gray, so it's not black or white versus color. The intent there is to have a darker charcoal on our accent strips in the metal panels so that we can have the idea of the offsets and provide a change in the architectural feel. The medium gray would be centered over the office areas on both the east and the south, and the east and the north corners of the building, so that it accentuates the office from the rest of the building. And then the remainder of the building would be a off-white, real light gray color, so that we can have our three different contrasts there. There's an accent band that will be around the entire building on the top two courses of block, we find that that looks real nice, and there's also a canopy that will be over the office area on the southeast corner of the building. The intent is to provide landscaping in compliance with the ordinance. Once we have a tenant on board, the intent there is to have signage in compliance with the ordinance, and likewise, the lighting on the building at this point in time is just strictly security lighting and ingress lighting for both the trucks and ambulatory people in and out of the man doors at this time. We aren't proposing any large light pole standards, majority of these buildings operate during daylight hours, those buildings that do work into the evening hours, that security lighting and lighting that's on the building is sufficient for everybody to operate in ingress in and out of the building on a daily basis. With that, we'd be available for any questions that you might have. We concur with the staff's findings, and the four commitments that Ben mentioned a minute ago, we're willing to comply with, one being making revisions to the construction documents to address comments and revisions requested by the TAC parties, some of those have already been addressed in these drawings that we're presenting to you this evening. Obtaining drainage approval from both the city of Lebanon and Mr. Krulik's office, along with Boone County Surveyor's Office and their consultant, Christopher Burke, which we've made submittals to, and we have some revisions to revise and send back to them. Third being, the developer and the future tenants will make submittals to staff for their review and approval of lighting and signage in the future. And then fourth, once staff has an opportunity to thoroughly take a look at our revised building elevations that we submitted today, this problem, this problem came up on Thursday, we've had Good Friday and Easter, so we are all scrambling here to come up with a plan that we could present to the Plan Commission this evening, and hopefully gain your review and approval, but we're willing to work with staff on any minor details or comments that you men and women may come up with here this evening. With that, Reed and I will be available for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you. Anyone from the board have questions for the applicant?
Adam, for the, the benefit of the group and the audience, what is the status of the IDEM comfort letter?
The, the IDEM final approval letter is, is in the works, we're going through the last phase currently, waiting on some final results from different things that have happened on the site with the remediation, and one last group of information on the wells, but so far, everything's been cleaned, we've done everything we said we were going to do, and it's just a matter of going through the process with IDEM. We actually need to construct the facility and build the parking lot with a hard surface, and build the building with a hard surface that essentially caps off the ground, and that's a part of the process through IDEM, so once the building is up and constructed, we will be finishing that up with IDEM, but we're, we're on course with them as far as we know.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I'll open it up for a public hearing. Anyone like to come forward, speak on this issue? Come on up, anybody wants to come up? Not seeing anyone, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. Okay, I would entertain a motion for docket number 22-27. Or no, 25 rather, I'm sorry. Read the wrong one, 25.
I make a motion to approve the development plan contingent on addressing TAC comments, drainage, lighting, and signage, I'm working with the staff on elevation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
John Lastly.
Yes.
Kevin Krulik.
Yes.
Keith Campbell.
Yes.
Brian Tandy.
Yes.
Ali Mullen.
Yes.
Lori Gross.
Yes.
Okay, motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next docket is 22-27. Habitat for Humanity requesting rezoning for a vacant parcel location at 1720 Southeast Street. The property is currently zoned PBC, planned business commercial, requesting rezoning to SF3, single-family residential. Go ahead.
Good evening, board, we'll give Ben a break on this last one, and I'll run through it real quick, you've had a couple of these before you tonight, so the process should be somewhat familiar to you. We have a rezone request from Habitat for Humanity, they purchased the property located on Southeast Street, and you see East Street is on the east side of this parcel with Birchwood and I-65 along the south, just off the map is the real estate office and Starbucks spread up to the west there. Habitat's plan is to subdivide this parcel into three individual parcels to create three single-family residential units. Based on the lot size, the most appropriate zoning classification would be single-family residential SF3, so in part of this rezon application, in order to do it, staff has to look at three different criteria, I'm sorry, the five different criteria. The first is the consistency with the comprehensive plan, the future land use comprehensive plan, obviously, as Ben has said, is used as a guide for the desired land use. The zoning typically conforms with the land designation, but it's not required to. In this particular case, the property is zoned for commercial use, but as staff reviewed this, given the mix of land uses in the area, this size and location is not conducive to your typical commercial development, so we thought that rezoning to single-family SF3, while not consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, the subject lot would be properly zoned, would be appropriate to be rezoned SF3. The second criteria is the compatibility with the adjacent uses, as you see in the map, we've got a single-family residential on several sides, we've got commercial on a couple of sides. Giving the SF3 compatibility with existing land uses, staff does recommend that it is compatible with the adjacent uses. The desirability of land use is the third criteria, the SF3 being proposed in order to allow the existing lots to be subdivided, as I mentioned, for a single-family residential development. The proposed zoning district would use, use would not only be compatible with the surrounding uses, but would be desirable given the existing pattern of the development in the area. The proposed subdivision to three lots would include lots that are 67 feet wide and 150 feet deep, and over 10,000 square feet. Lot widths in the area adjacent to this property range from anywhere from 60 to 90 feet, and 7,500 to 10,000 square feet. So staff does find the subject zoning to SF3 is, is a desirable land use within this proposed area. The fourth criteria is the impact on property values, the immediate area contains a variety of single-family, multi-family, and non-residential uses, so the proposed single-family land use would be the most appropriate land use. uses, so the proposed single-family land use would be the most appropriate land use and would be consistent with the adjacent uses. I'm going to say use as many times as possible tonight. The subject rezoning to SF3 would have no negative impact on property values in the area. And lastly, the responsible growth, the rezone to SF3 will allow for the development of a desirable land use on the subject residential lots. The area is served by existing roads, sanitaries, water, and storm sewers all around the property. So, the rezoning to single-family SF3 does represent responsible growth and development. And with all of that, staff does recommend the petition be forwarded by the Plan Commission to the Common Council with a favorable recommendation.
Any other, any questions from the board? Not seeing any questions from the board. I'd ask the applicant to come forward.
Good evening. I am Liz Quah, Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity, Boone County. I see several familiar faces here. We have an office here in Lebanon as well as an office in Zionsville at the Restor. So, thank you for listening to this request tonight. We're super excited to find land. Honestly, it's been really difficult for us. So, to be able to find a place that we can build three homes is really pivotal for us. So, I'll just give you a quick blowdown on what Habitat is, if you're not familiar. We are a nonprofit here in Boone County that builds affordable housing. We've been around since 1984, and we built 67 homes to date, just in Boone County. And our homeowners come to us with a need for affordable housing. Many of them are living completely housing insecure. They're living with family and friends. They can't afford the rents for their children, you know, to have a place big enough for them. So, we do, to verify the need, we do a home inspection of wherever they live, unless they're living with family and friends. So, we know that they truly have a need. They also have to pay us back a mortgage. So, it's similar to if you guys have mortgages or have paid them off, it's the same document. They have to pay us back over 30 years. The best part is it's 0% interest, so it really is super affordable in the end. And then, the most important part for us is that they partner with us, and they do sweat equity. So, they put $200 hours of sweat equity into the house, so they learn how to take care of it. They learn how to use a hammer and a saw and get on a ladder and all those things that homeownership can be hired for your first house. A lot of these, a lot of our homeowners, they didn't grow up even in their family having a house, so this is, they're the first in their family to own a house. So, you know, we're just also excited to provide workforce housing for Lebanon Business Park and a lot of the area and just county businesses around here. So, you know, house prices are great. If you're living in a house, it's gone up in value, but if you're trying to get into one, it's near impossible, right? As we've heard earlier tonight. So, super excited to find a lot with, that we can put three homes on, so, yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the board? None? Okay. Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. Not seeing anyone. Okay, moving forward. We'll close the public hearing. Okay. I'd introduce a motion for the docket 22-27.
I'll make a motion that we move to the Common Council, docket 22-27, for the SF3 for Habitat for Humanity.
Okay, we have a motion.
A second.
Favorable recommendation?
Yes. Did I say unfavorable?
I don't think you said.
Oh, I'm sorry. Favorable recommendation.
Okay. Second.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
John Lastly.
Yes.
Kevin Krulik.
Yes.
Keith Campbell.
Yes.
Brian Tandy.
Yes.
Ally Mullen.
Yes.
Lori Gross.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other business, Ben? None? Okay. Well, the next regular meeting of the Plan Commission is scheduled for Monday, May 16, 2022, and the last motion would be to adjourn. We have some move. Have a second?
Second.
In a second. Okay, hold on. Favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned, and thank you. See you on May 18, May 16.